Gracias a todos los candidatos por tomarse el tiempo de estar aquí esta noche. Y gracias a todos ustedes que han venido. Gracias por participar en esta temporada electoral. Yo soy Becky Halpin, miembro de esta iglesia, la primera iglesia unitaria y universalista. Y estamos muy contentas de que todos estén aquí esta noche. Y solo para aquellos de ustedes que vinieron y no escucharon el anuncio, las bañeras están directamente en este pasillo a la derecha. Para que se despeguen. En noviembre, Austin va a elegir su primer consejo municipal con distritos de una unidad. El propósito de este foro es permitir a los candidatos expresar sus opiniones sobre cuestiones importantes relacionadas con la energía de Austin. Y asistir a los residentes de los distritos 4 y 9 en reunión de información sobre los candidatos antes de la elección. Valorado a $3.8 mil millones, la energía de Austin es el asset más valioso de la ciudad. Además de proporcionar poder a la ciudad, sus residentes y negocios, el ingreso de la energía de Austin apoya las operaciones de la ciudad como parques, infraestructura, EMF, bomberos y bibliotecas. El 37% del presupuesto general de Austin proviene de la energía de Austin. Las decisiones tomadas sobre la energía de Austin también afectan al cambio climático, la calidad del aire, el uso del agua y la accesibilidad. Por todas estas razones, la energía de Austin es una mayor responsabilidad para el consejo municipal de Austin. Por eso, esta grupo de organizaciones sin fines de lucro ha venido juntas para organizar una serie de foros centrados en la energía de Austin. Organizaciones participantes son: Public Citizen, Coalition, Sierra Club, Solar Austin, Texas Rose, Clean Water Action, Austin Climate Action Network, Texas Drought Project, Primera Iglesia Unitaria y Universalista Green Sanctuary, y Wildflower Unitaria y Universalista Church. Antes de empezar, hay algunas reglas fundamentales. A cada candidato le darán un minuto para abordar declaraciones de abertura y uno por encerrado. El tiempo asignado para responder a cada pregunta será expresado con la pregunta. Carol estará manteniendo el tiempo y mostrará tarjetas para indicar cuánto tiempo el orador tiene. ¿Todos pueden ver las tarjetas? Debido al gran número de candidatos y el número de preguntas, pedimos que los candidatos respeten los límites de tiempo y terminen sus respuestas tan pronto como el tiempo llegue. Este es un foro, no un debate, así que no se le dará tiempo a las reabordaciones. Para permitir a todos los candidatos una oportunidad de ser oídos, pedimos que permanezcan quietos hasta el final del foro. Después de concluir con nuestras preguntas, habrá tiempo para juntarse con los candidatos y hacer cualquier pregunta adicional que tengan. Por selección aleatoria, Chris Riley comenzará las declaraciones de abertura. Luego procederemos a las tarjetas de los candidatos. La oportunidad de responder primero se shiftará a la tarjeta de los candidatos con cada pregunta, mientras alternamos entre los distritos 4 y 9. Kaiba estará detrás de los candidatos para facilitar el paso del micrófono si es necesario. Comencemos con las declaraciones de abertura. ¿Chris?
Muchas gracias, Becky. Es un placer estar aquí esta noche. Mi nombre es Chris Riley. He servido en el consejo municipal de Austin desde 2009. Yo mismo nací y fue criado aquí en Austin, con la educación en la ciudad de Austin. Fui elegido al consejo en 2009. He servido no solo en el consejo, sino también en la Junta Municipal de la Ciudad de San Antonio. Durante mi servicio en el consejo, una de las cosas más satisfactorias que he podido trabajar fue sobre cuestiones relacionadas con la energía de Austin. Así que he estado esperando este foro esta noche como una oportunidad para hablar de ello. Austin ha jugado un papel real importante como líder nacional en cuestiones de energía y protección climática. Y realmente he disfrutado la oportunidad de ayudar a mantener ese rol de líder y avanzar hacia adelante. Tenemos verdaderos activos en términos de propiedad de utilidades, nuestra capacidad de establecer el curso sobre cuestiones importantes relacionadas con todo el país. Y el activo más importante que tenemos son las personas aquí como ustedes que se preocupan tanto por estas cuestiones. Yo realmente he disfrutado la oportunidad de trabajar con aquellos que se preocupan por ello y espero poder continuar con eso. Gracias.
Hola, mi nombre es Erin McGann. Soy la única no incumbente que gira en el distrito 9. Tengo un background en finanzas y auditoría. Actualmente trabajo para el Departamento de Justicia Penal de Texas, administrando un programa de reentrada, ayudando a las personas que se liberan de la prisión a reentregar a la sociedad y convertirse en miembros productivos. He pasado algún tiempo en Austin trabajando con la Fundación Trail. También voy a limpiar los parques todos los días. Probablemente lo mayor cosa medioambiental que he hecho fue hace muchos años rodearme de Rocky Flats con unas pocas miles de otras personas fuera de Denver, Colorado, cuando estábamos tratando de cerrar Rocky Flats. Austin es realmente un gran líder en la energía ambiental y estoy muy orgullosa de lo que hemos hecho hasta ahora y podemos hacer mucho mejor. Realmente quiero ser parte de hacer las cosas mejores, más verdes en Austin, cambiando algunos de los códigos y haciendo que las personas vivan verdes en Austin. Gracias.
Estoy esperando a que Carol obtenga su tarjeta. No quiero empezar con 15 segundos. Yo soy Kathy Tebow y es realmente un placer estar aquí esta noche. He servido en el consejo municipal de Austin desde 2011, así que estoy en mi primer mandato. Tengo un doctorado en UT. Me mudé a estudiar en la universidad y ahora soy madre de dos jóvenes de la escuela primaria de la edad de las niñas y ha sido un verdadero privilegio servir. Cuando gano en 2011, una de las cosas que realmente me sorprendió varias de ustedes, incluidos algunos de ustedes aquí en esta sala, dijeron "El consejo municipal no ha sido tradicionalmente muy involucrado en la energía de Austin. Ellos no la están gobernando de la manera que necesitan como director de la junta." Así que ha sido una área muy crítica para mí para enfocarme, desde problemas fiscales y probablemente tendremos una oportunidad de hablar de eso en algún momento, hasta realmente asegurarnos de que estamos avanzando en la dirección correcta y reduciendo nuestra dependencia de combustibles fósiles y nucleares y avanzando hacia una energía limpia. Así que con eso, solo diré que no tengo miedo de levantar la voz a la energía de Austin. Lo tengo y continuarei haciéndolo si me reelegimos y me agradecería su consideración. Gracias.
Hola, yo soy Laura Presley y giro en el distrito 4. Nací aquí hace 26 años como madre sola con una hija de tres años y fui a UT a obtener un doctorado en química física y trabajé en la industria de semiconductores aquí en Austin durante 17 años gestionando equipos de ingeniería en Malasia, China y Austin, también en el sector empresarial. Fui la gerente de negocios, gerente de crecimiento de la empresa de networking. Así que lo más importante que quiero hacer aquí como presidenta del consejo municipal del distrito 4 es que quiero abordar la accesibilidad en dos formas. Una es la exención de vivienda en la ciudad de Austin y la segunda es reducir los costos de utilidades y el precio. Y cómo distinguirme de mis oponentes es que sé cómo pagar por ello y eso significa reducir subsidios a las corporaciones. Simplemente reducimos el impacto, simplemente comenzamos a recopilar impuestos de impacto para la energía de Austin. $20 millones al año que nosotros como ciudadanos pagamos. Podríamos llevar eso a nuestra exención de vivienda y reducir el precio ahora debido a eso. Espero poder tener su voto. Soy Laura Presley, distrito 4. Gracias.
Hola, soy Monica Udisván, nata de Boston. He sido una madre soltera desde que tenía 21 años, así que entiendo los desafíos y las luchas de muchos en el distrito. Nunca había tenido vivienda asequible, salud que pudiera pagar para mi hijo y también soy defensor de la educación pública. He hablado en el consejo municipal respecto al Grupo de Trabajo de Planificación de Recursos Generacionales, especialmente respecto a las recomendaciones de equidad. He señalado que no solo ayuda a reducir los costos de utilidades para las personas de baja rama de ingresos, también crea empleos, reduce la carga de impuestos en el país a nivel municipal. Así que es una situación de lucha por todos lados. Como dije, apoyo la educación pública, la salud para todos y la asequibilidad de la vivienda. Y no es sólo la vivienda pública, corta a través de muchos niveles de ingresos. Promuevo el uso de las tierras públicas y he propuesto eso a los dueños de la AISB. Se lo recibieron y van a investigar sus propiedades inutilizadas en este momento. Estoy esperando hablar con todos ustedes y espero tu apoyo.
Quiero agradecer a todos por venir esta tarde y que no se te ocurra que viajes con este horrible tráfico. Gracias por tomarse el tiempo esta tarde. Mi nombre es Robert Pobetis y giro para el consejo municipal de Austin, distrito 4. Mi experiencia va desde el negocio, pequeñas empresas, tener pequeñas empresas y desarrollo de pequeñas empresas hasta el desarrollo de la fuerza laboral y también mis opciones educativas que he tomado para proporcionar a mi familia. Tengo dos hijos y a mi esposa, así que los problemas de energía han sido muy importantes, especialmente para individuos que viven en el distrito 4 que generalmente trabajan dos o tres trabajos para hacer una vida. Así que eso es algo que es muy importante. Creo que mi experiencia en el negocio, mi desarrollo de la fuerza laboral y mi doctorado en el negocio ayudarán a hacer una diferencia en nuestro distrito. He estado viviendo en el distrito 4 los últimos cinco años y he estado trabajando junto a mis vecinos para mejorar nuestro distrito y hacerlo un lugar más seguro. Coche de la junta de restauración y renovación y también sirvo en la junta de trabajo. Gracias.
Hola a todos, mi nombre es Greg Cassar y giro para el consejo para elevar las voces de los trabajadores, familias de rama de ingresos moderada y nuestros vecinos de rama de ingresos fijos que demasiado a menudo se ignoran o se olvidan o no priorizan en la sala de la ciudad. Esta elección es una increíble oportunidad para asegurarnos de que todos sean oídos y tengo la experiencia, la experiencia local haciendo justo eso. Como director de política en el Proyecto Defensa de los Trabajadores, he construido coaliciones para aumentar los salarios de los trabajadores, crear empleos para las personas que más los necesitaban. Quiero que ustedes, en esta grupo, protejan más nuestros árboles de herencia y participen en una campaña para actualizar nuestros códigos de edificio. Y cuando hablamos de la necesidad de los trabajadores, el manejo y el control de nuestra utilidad son críticos porque los pagos de utilidades son una gran parte de los presupuestos de las familias trabajadoras porque la alteración climática afecta a los trabajadores de clase trabajadora primero. Y así creo que los problemas sociales y los problemas medioambientales y los problemas de la energía de Austin, todos van adelante.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Sharon Mays. Primero quiero disculparme porque estoy perdiendo mi voz. Así que normalmente no suena como una fraude, así que disculpa en advance por eso. Giro para el consejo municipal, distrito 4. He vivido en nuestro distrito por unos 10 años. Nací en Austin. He sido líder de negocios y de comunidad durante 20 años. Durante ese tiempo he ganado mucha experiencia gestionando a la gente y proyectos y presupuestos y ayudando a crecer las empresas, así como realmente entender la responsabilidad cuando se trata de presupuestos. Y creo que cuando hablamos de la energía de Austin y energías y cuestiones relacionadas con el medioambiente en nuestra ciudad y en nuestro distrito, estos son elementos críticos del problema y de la oportunidad. He estado involucrado en cuestiones ambientales por mucho tiempo, comenzando cuando era un senior en la escuela secundaria y estaba en cargo de nuestro don de señora y dábamos 500 árboles que si ustedes alguna vez conducen por I-35 a Round Rock verán 500 árboles a lo largo de la carretera que aseguré que habíamos plantado. También soy presidente de la Guardia Comunitaria Norte de Austin.
Bien, esos fueron grandes declaraciones de abertura. Y vamos a seguir y comenzar con las preguntas. Y aquí está la primera pregunta. Kaiba va a pasar nuestras copias de las preguntas a los candidatos para que puedan verlas. Y recordarles lo que estamos pidiendo aquí. Así que aquí está la primera pregunta. Esta es una pregunta de un minuto. ¿Cuál es su posición en el consejo municipal manteniendo la responsabilidad completa de gobernanza de la energía de Austin, transferiendo autoridad a una junta independiente o privatizando la utilidad? Y creo que tenemos a Monica Guzmán primero. ¿Es eso cierto?
Es cierto, la señora agarró el micrófono. Mi posición es que el consejo municipal necesita mantener la gobernanza de la energía de Austin. Es una utilidad pública, necesita estar en manos públicas. Si se vayan a privatizar, no en mi agenda, eso significa que no hay supervisión, no hay control de lo que pasa, no hay transparencia. Lo siento por eso. Y ya tenemos suficientes reclamaciones de transparencia que he oído sobre cosas que están en manos públicas. No necesitamos hacerlo peor, pero ya lo tenemos.
Quiero decir, para ser eficiente y para ahorrar energía, estaré de acuerdo con mi comentario, Monica. Creo que tiene que mantenerse en el consejo municipal. Tenemos que asegurarnos de que sea responsable de los individuos que pagan y aquellos individuos que pagan para tener esta operación. Así que creo que es la forma en que debería mantenerse, que el consejo municipal tenga esa supervisión. Por eso es la energía de Austin.
Creo que parte de lo que nos hace unico y una gran ciudad es que confiamos en nuestros ciudadanos para poder determinar su propio destino y futuro y eso ha demostrado que mantenemos y poseemos nuestro aeropuerto, nuestra utilidad de agua y la energía de Austin. Es crucial que podamos asegurar que nuestros valores de comunidad se reflejan en el manejo de nuestra utilidad y realmente pensamos en los necesidades a largo plazo de las personas de Austin y no solo objetivos de renta a corto plazo. Así que es por eso que creo que hemos sido un líder en el cambio climático y la energía renovable, en mantener precios asequibles y niveles de tira para que las personas de rama de ingresos bajos no sufran tanto los incrementos de los precios y que podamos tener programas dirigidos a la comunidad como nuestro programa de programación de temperatura en favor de expandirse. Eso es debido a la entrada de los ciudadanos y la participación ciudadana a través del consejo. Así que estoy en contra de transferir autoridad entre la junta independiente y el consejo, manteniendo el máximo sayo como director de la energía de Austin.
Creo que definitivamente es en el mejor interés de los ciudadanos de Austin, así como de la energía de Austin, que la utilidad permanezca bajo la gobernanza de un miembro del consejo municipal de Austin. Tener el consejo en el board de la energía de Austin ayuda a asegurarnos de que los objetivos de la ciudad están engrainados en la energía de Austin. Muchos de los esfuerzos que hemos hecho con transferir a más recursos de energía verde son debido al compromiso que el consejo municipal ha hecho a los ciudadanos de Austin. Creo que con este nuevo consejo definitivamente tenemos la oportunidad de incorporar miembros del consejo que tienen un fuerte fondo de negocio para realmente entender y apreciar el rol de estar en el board de un negocio de $3.8 mil millones y cómo manejarlo y ayudar a liderar esa grupo para que permanezca competitiva, que podamos proporcionar energía a los clientes de todos los niveles de ingresos y que estemos en el líder de recursos de energía verde.
Esta es una pregunta excelente. Y creo que es interesante. La energía de Austin es una división de ingeniería de la ciudad con un presupuesto enorme. Y necesitamos que haya alguien en el consejo que tenga cierta experiencia técnica para hacer preguntas realmente difíciles. He estado en muchas reuniones de consejo, esperando que uno de los miembros del consejo le haga una pregunta técnica y no solo confíe en lo que el personal les ha dicho. Ese es un gran desafío que tenemos y puedo ver dónde viene la presión de tener esa experiencia en el board. Así que sabiendo eso en el背景, no apoyo privatizarlo o realmente poner un board gobernante. Necesitamos que la energía de Austin esté mantenida como un board dirigido y que sea responsable de los votantes cuando el consejo esté en cargo. Así que la respuesta es poner algunas personas técnicas, con antecedentes técnicos, en el consejo. Y esa es una cosa que puedo proporcionar y que me distinguiere de los otros candidatos. Gracias.
Absolutamente, la energía de Austin necesita permanecer bajo el control de la ciudad. Es, como se notó anteriormente, el 37% del fondo general. La gran mayoría del fondo general es usado para pagar las policías, fire, EMS. Y si comenzamos a reducir lo que entra en el fondo general, entonces empezaremos a ver que no obtenemos nada más excepto para los primeros respondientes. Y tenemos muchas otras cosas que nos gustaría hacer en esta ciudad en lugar de solo tener un buen fuente de primeros responders. No que no necesitemos primeros responders realmente, pero necesitamos mantener la energía de Austin bajo el control de la ciudad. Necesitamos aumentar su transparencia. Han empezado con eso. Necesitamos continuar con eso y asegurarnos de que estén trabajando para la gente de la ciudad.
Estoy 100% de favor de mantener nuestro sistema de gobernanza actual. El consejo municipal necesita estar en el alcalde de la energía de Austin. Como muchos de ustedes saben, en 2013 tuvimos esta conversación en el consejo y tuve momentos muy nerviosos porque si oyeron, si vuelven a nuestras sesiones de trabajo, había un real apoyo por el movimiento a un board independiente o al movimiento de algún tipo de sistema de hybrid. Y fue, tomó algunas voces muy fuertes y yo me colocaría como una de ellas para convencer al consejo de detenerse. En mi automóvil tengo un gran calefacción que fue el resultado de una resolución que yo patrociné para pedir al gobierno de nuestra ciudad que preparara un análisis de qué utilidades con boards independientes cómo comparan con la energía de Austin. Y lo que encontramos fue que nuestra utilidad de energía está haciendo muy bien en todas las categorías y, por supuesto, excelente en términos de ser un líder real en términos de energía limpia. Así que nuestro sistema actual funciona y es lo que necesitamos seguir haciendo. Estoy muy de favor de continuar.
Estoy de acuerdo con que el consejo necesita mantener la responsabilidad completa de la energía de Austin. Pero eso realmente no es el final de la historia. La razón por la que esta pregunta salió en 2013 es que la Comisión de Utilidades Electricas, el organismo de ciudadanos que nos está ayudando a supervisar la utilidad, estaba expresando preocupaciones sobre la gobernanza de la energía de Austin. Y en particular, estaban diciendo que realmente no sentían que eran capaces de hacer un trabajo adecuado de supervisar la utilidad y no sentían que el consejo lo quisiera, que no estaba recibiendo la scrutiny que necesitaba. Y ustedes se dan cuenta de lo que pasa cuando eso ocurre. Eso significa que las decisiones están siendo tomadas por el personal de utilidades detrás de las puertas, fuera de la publica. Necesitamos un sistema de gobernanza efectivo en lugar de no solo cubrir toda la responsabilidad del consejo, sino también una supervisión muy efectiva. Patrociné una resolución para crear un comité de consejo sobre la energía de Austin. Creo que el nuevo consejo tendrá que pensar duro en cómo exactamente va a ejercer su responsabilidad y probablemente continuar tendiendo un comité en lugar solo enfocado en supervisar la utilidad.
Wow. Gracias, candidatos. Ustedes son geniales. Así que la siguiente pregunta. Hay confusión aquí, pero ahora estamos claros. Así que la siguiente pregunta es también una pregunta de un minuto. Aquí está. ¿Dónde están ustedes en el enfoque de lograr el objetivo de protección climática de Austin, incluyendo la implementación del objetivo adoptado por el consejo municipal y la resolución de la asequibilidad de la energía de hacer que los recursos generativos de la energía de Austin sean carbonfrees por 2030? Y creo que eso es, Kathy.
Gracias. Teníamos algunas confusión de preguntas aquí, pero ahora tengo la correcta. Estoy 100% de favor de ello y apoyo las resoluciones relacionadas con la mejora de nuestro objetivo de protección climática y establecer límites anteriores para conseguir carbonfrees en la ciudad. También, en colaboración con varias de ustedes aquí en esta sala, patrociné la creación del Grupo de Trabajo de Trabajo de Generación, lo cual creo que va a realmente nos pondremos en el camino. Hemos podido adoptar algunas recomendaciones en las últimas semanas, pero tener ese grupo de trabajo fue enormemente importante. Y quiero decir, esta es una razón por la que necesitamos mantener la gobernanza en las manos del consejo. Tengo eso en la agenda. Larry Bees, el gerente general de la energía de Austin, se acercó al consejo para intentar que mi co-patrocinador saltara. Y me dijo, "Esto se siente punitivo. Ya necesitamos buenos estándares, ¿por qué queremos poner nuevos?" Así que creo que esa es una razón por la que tenemos que mantener a la comunidad involucrada, por lo que tenemos que tener un consejo fuerte que esté dispuesto a levantar la voz y decir "Estamos haciendo bien como utilidad, pero podemos hacer aún mejor. Acompáñense y realmente establezca objetivos más altos para nuestro futuro de energía limpia."
Bueno, definitivamente apoyo el lograr el objetivo de protección climática de Austin, incluyendo la implementación de un objetivo adoptado por el consejo municipal en la resolución de la asequibilidad de hacer que los recursos generativos de la energía de Austin sean carbonfrees para 2030. Fui patrocinador de esa resolución y estaba muy feliz de verla pasar. Esa resolución se construyó sobre una resolución previa que también patrocine en abril de este año, que estableció objetivos nuevos ambiciosos de protección climática. Y fue un esfuerzo para continuar el rol de líder que Austin ha jugado desde 2007, cuando el señor Rowan nos ayudó a crear un plan de protección climática en lugar de. Pero lo que hicimos en abril de este año fue establecer objetivos nuevos que nos permitirían llegar al estatus carbonfreo como comunidad para 2050 y que nos establecieron procesos de acción para desarrollar objetivos más específicos en cada área principal que contribuye a los gases de greenhouse gas, uno de ellos siendo la energía de Austin. Así que la resolución de la asequibilidad de la energía fue un natural paso a ello y estoy muy emocionado por la oportunidad que tenemos de continuar con la leadership que Austin ha tenido en la protección climática.
Así que sé que todos están buscando a alguien para salir del molde y decir que no están de acuerdo con esto, pero no será yo, lo siento. Estoy tan emocionada de que se aprobé este proyecto. Estoy emocionada de que Kathy y Chris estuvieran involucrados en esto y creo que Austin puede incluso hacerlo mejor que esto. Creo que en realidad podemos lograr este objetivo antes de 2030. Estaba hablando con una señora hace poco. Estaba en Burlington, Vermont este verano y Burlington, Vermont, no, esta es una ciudad de 45,000 personas, así que es un poco una extensión para comparar a Austin con ella, pero han construido 100% de energía renovable para su ciudad y no veo ninguna razón por la que no podemos hacer eso. Estoy muy emocionada de estar involucrada en esto y hacer esto funcionar. Hay un número de otras cosas que podemos hacer para aumentar nuestra verdesidad, pero a lo largo de esta pregunta, estoy absolutamente emocionada de que este proyecto esté aprobado y que lo empuje a que lo logremos incluso antes. Gracias.
Creo que tenemos una buena, y no he escrito ninguna política, así que no puedo seguir las dos candidaturas. Estoy de favor de lo que tenemos aquí en el momento. La única cosa que tenemos que tener en cuenta en este, en este distrito 4, es que tenemos energía asequible para los residentes en el distrito 4. Quiero decir, tenemos un objetivo realmente grande para 2030, pero también estamos asegurándonos de que consideramos que somos asequibles porque como dije anteriormente en mi declaración de abertura, tenemos individuos que viven en el distrito 4 que están corriendo por el día a día para hacer pagos y ellos prefieren ir a trabajar que salir a un foro como este. Así que si miras alrededor, verás muchos, voy a decir muchos personas brancas, muchos personas de espalda porque no están trabajando. Así que quiero asegurarme de que si establecemos algunos objetivos, que tenemos objetivos que harán que sea asequible para todos los individuos en el distrito 4.
También estoy de igualdad de favor de nuestras resoluciones, tanto para la accesibilidad como para la protección climática. También he encontrado a muchos gente dentro del distrito en eventos de outreach y en walk-in que ahora son una nueva parte de nuestro electorate. Ahora que estamos expandiendo, la conversación política de 10-1 y el movimiento a la elección en noviembre, vamos a tener más gente que está incluida en la conversación política. Y creo que eso va a ser una gran cosa, pero necesitamos asegurarnos de que el movimiento medioambiental se expanda para incluir a esas personas. Y con el constante ataque a la ciencia climática en los medios y por gente con intereses políticos muy específicos, he oído de mucha gente, "Bueno, el consejo municipal está muy de acuerdo con esta cuestión de energía renovable, pero ¿y yo?" Y creo que es por eso que necesitamos vincular programas de energía solar, ya sea distribuidos o no, a la creación de empleo y programas de temperatura a desarrollo de la fuerza laboral y formación para que las comunidades de clase trabajadora puedan ver el beneficio no solo de mantener los pagos de 2% cada año, sino también de reducir el empleo.
Creo que el objetivo de protección climática, así como la resolución de la asequibilidad de la energía ambos han sido grandes para nuestra comunidad. Creo que el compromiso que la ciudad ha hecho para alejarse de la energía blanca a la energía verde es muy importante para nuestra comunidad ahora y a largo plazo. En el distrito 4 definitivamente tenemos muchos alquileres, así que necesitamos asegurarnos de que esta nueva fuente de energía es algo que sea accesible y disponible para todos nuestros residentes. Estoy muy emocionada por el programa de leasing solar que esperamos tener disponible para espacios comerciales para que los apartamentos y las personas que viven en áreas de alquiler multifamiliares sean capaces de obtener una fuente como solar. Creo que en general, en el panorama general, estas son las cosas que necesitamos hacer. Por eso necesitamos que el consejo municipal goberne la utilidad porque esto es de importancia para nuestra comunidad y asegurarnos de que la accesibilidad está vinculada a la sostenibilidad hace que sea responsable y accesible para todos nuestros ciudadanos.
...and the council could have done a better job. The 2%, and this relates to District Four, the 2% is only related to fees, I'm sorry, to rates. There's nothing in there that's related to controlling the cost of the fuel charges, which are the majority of the increases that are going to happen with this type of, this type of goal. So there's several ways to deal with this. They could have directed Austin Energy to come back with cost-reduction goals quarter on quarter, not once a year when the budget happens, quarter on quarter, and have this reviewed at the council, because you're going to have to cut costs in other places, so that District Four is not going to crater with regard to our utility rates. Our resents, household income, is $36,000 a year. This council did not take our district into consideration, and we've been forgotten for decades, and that's what we need to change on the council.
I'm not breaking the mold as far as support. I totally support it. As I said, I've spoken to the Austin Energy Generation Resource Planning Task Force two or three times, supporting their entire report, especially the employee recommendations. I was honored to be part of the press conference before the resolution was passed through a heartbeat. I supported them onsite, as well as from a distance, if I couldn't be there. I also think what needs to be done is they need to make sure, besides bringing down the cost across the board, they also need to see about making sure that the residents aren't being charged for illegal fees. They need to make sure that corporations are paying their rent shares. We need to make sure that there's an educational component, not only within the city staff, but working with school districts, making sure the students know the end result, the bigger the end result. It can be the ripple effect as they get older. And...
We might be able to reply the other night, we'll see. But great job, everybody. Thank you. So, next question. This is also a one-minute question. What is your position on retiring Austin Energy's gas-fired Decker plant and coal-fired Fayette plant? Think we start this way, you know, with, correct, I think?
So I am for retiring both Decker and Fayette, however it's feasible and legally feasible and practical. My understanding at Decker is that we use it mostly for peak energy use, and so there are ways that things like solar can also deal with our peak energy use, and considering the lowering cost of solar and federal credits associated with that, I think that that is something that we need to prioritize. With Fayette, we need to figure out how to transfer ownership of Fayette. I think there's two segments of it, and they're shared between us and the L.C.R.A. And if we're going to be determining our own future, whether we're planning on shutting down our portion of Fayette or not, we need to be able to determine our own future and own our own half of that coal plant, which, you know, I'm from Houston, I'm driving down the road back home to see my parents. I know that that is just very, not a clean plant at all. I'm one of the dirtiest in the state, so I'm for retiring both of them.
I definitely agree that retiring Decker and Fayette is a huge priority. At Decker, I believe there are plans in place to invest in a solar farm that would take the place of the energy source that is being generated there. With Fayette, I think it's, of course, again, different because we are not the sole owner of that utility. We definitely need to sit down and come up with a plan for how we can gain control of that utility, so that we can move towards shutting it down. Overall, as a community, we need to be more responsible with our energy creation and move to a cleaner source of energy. Both of these two plants are polluters. They are not efficient forms of energy, and in the long run, are not cost-efficient. Solar does not require the water that either of these two plants require, and when we talk about water accessibility and water affordability, we definitely need to be moving to energy sources that do not require millions of gallons of water to create energy.
So again, I do support retiring the Austin Energy's Decker plant under certain criteria. Again, it has to do with cost, and coal sources for energy are not that expensive. It's one of the lowest expense sources of energy. So we will have increased utility rates if we get rid of that. How do you deal with that? That's the challenge. We want one thing, but you're going to have to look at something else with regard on the other side about how we can protect our utility rates and all of that. So again, I have worked in an engineering division. I was one of the leaders, management leaders, in a billion-dollar networking business at Freescale Semiconductor. We've had these types of goals all the time. You want this, you've got to cut costs. What you do is you implement lean business practices. In Austin Energy, if you want to do these goals, we have to take away, we have to reduce costs if we want the renewables, because we don't, again, we do not and cannot crater District One, District Two, District Three, District Four, okay? These are our residents who are low-income. We can't just ignore their needs. Thank you.
I support retiring both Decker and Fayette. First, with regard to Decker. Decker was covered in the Affordable Energy Resolution that I sponsored. I embraced the goals that set out by the Generation Task Force that recommended that we retire Decker by 2017 and replace it with a 600-megawatt gas plant. It appears that we will be able to do that within our affordability goals, because the price of solar has come down so far. Fayette, I also support retiring Fayette, but it's a little more challenging, because of the ownership structure and the tens of millions of dollars of debt we owe on Fayette. The good news is that we expect that it will be, at the end, that's used for life by 2025. And so I'd support figuring out how, what's the soonest time that we can practically retire it before that time. I don't support just selling it off to somebody else who's going to continue polluting with it. We need to figure out a strategic plan for being able to retire it within our affordability goals, and I hope that will be at some point before 2025, and that will require careful calculation if we get there.
So I'm trying to figure out a different way to say to you that I do want to retire these plants, but I don't know a different way. But I'd like to talk for a minute about some of the other costs that come with having plants that are so polluting. The cost to the coal miners who dig the coal up, the cost to the people who live near the plants, generally are more low-income people who don't even have access to good health care. So we have to look at global cost when we talk about things like this. Yes, it is, it may show up in the bottom line of your utility bill. However, if we restructure the way that Austin Energy does its business practices, we can very easily reduce the way that that looks. We do need to, we want to be green. We need to live up to that and do what we can to close those plants.
I'm also supportive of both, and did and have voted that way on the dais when we have had resolutions before us, as we did recently, which included within it a recommendation to increase Austin Energy's procurement of solar to replace some of the load that's that Decker is currently managing, for example. I also am very supportive of getting, of retiring Fayette, not selling, but retiring our position in Fayette. It is complicated. When we got back the estimates from our staff, the rate proposal, or the rate that would have been attached to that was really staggering. And so I'm very, very supportive of doing it as soon as possible, but we do need to be, to figure out how we can do that without having a major impact on affordability. But it's critical that we do it. It's the sixth largest carbon polluter in Texas, out of 120 plants. It's devastating to our environment, and we really do retire them.
My goodness, this is terrible. We forgot people. Here.
I also support retiring both of them, and you can move away from the fossil fuels, like you can move away from nuclear energy, and biomass, and focus on the clean energy, wind and solar. You know, obviously, it's going to be expensive. We need to find a way to do that. And I'm not that well versed in it, but we owe it to the environment, and we owe it to the people.
Okay, so I think I have, I've been looking more at the numbers today. My priority is to develop a sustainable solution to the, to our energy needs. As the city is growing, we need to take that into consideration, and also affordability. To replace the Decker plant with solar generation in far west creates reliability issues. The sun does not always sometimes shine in West Texas, so what happens when there is no sun? Up to the current, or currently, we haven't developed large storage facilities for this energy, developed on the side. So two, the plant is also, the Decker plant is also closer to the center of Austin. It does not depend on availability of large costly transmission lines to move power, so a solar facility would also increase the cost. The Fayette plant has the lowest fuel cost, that is in 2012, than other energy sources, including wind and solar. So to replace that facility in the Fayette plant would mean that there would be an increase in prices. And that's kind of one of the issues that we need to, we need to develop a sustainable solution. We do need to make sure that we are keeping in mind District Four when it comes to cost.
Great. Again, great job, candidates. So here's the next question. It's a one-minute question. What is your position on customer adoption of solar energy at homes and businesses? And what, if any, policy changes would you support? And I think that starts down here. Is it, or is it Erin? A new idea out here. I am absolutely, 100% for people using solar energy on their homes, on their businesses. The, what I would like to see changed is the amount of energy, or I guess where Austin Energy can reuse the energy. So my example here is St. David's Church downtown put a bunch of solar panels on the roof of their building, and it makes more, on sunny days, it makes more energy than they can use. However, the energy grid is such that they can't take that energy back, because it will explode something. I know there's a lot of technical stuff here, and I don't understand any of the technical stuff on this. However, I would really like to see that be able to utilize that energy, because that becomes wasted energy. If we can purchase that back from them, somehow make it flow backwards, then that'll make our rates go down for low-income people. They can do it with houses. They should be able to do it with businesses. That's one of the things I'd change.
Well, I think we should certainly encourage it, and I, and we have recently adopted some recommendations that will enact some policy changes. For example, one of the things that Austin Energy did in this last year is start sweeping away people's credit if they had earned more through solar than they had spent, more or less, I'm simplifying it. Those credits were swept away at the end of the year, and so that's, I think rightly, a policy change that we should consider making. One of the ways, though, that I think we need to address the needs of all of our community members, is to consider how we might make these programs function better for renters, and also for homeowners who are, may not have the funds to invest in, in the equipment. And so that, looking at some of the kind of creative ways other cities have done that, through ongoing financing and other things, I think is very important as we move forward, to really make sure that, that all ratepayers in our community have the ability to, to use these, to use solar and to, you know, support our, our clean energy goals.
Well, I do support increasing our work on local solar, and in particular, distributed solar. The Affordable Energy Resolution, I've mentioned several times, actually included a new goal for pro-local solar. It stepped it up from 100 megawatts to 200 megawatts by 2020, with at least 100 megawatts of that being customer-controlled, being behind-the-meter solar. And that will require some addition, some further progress on our, on our policies with respect to distributed solar. First, with respect to the solar scheme, I firmly agree that the practice of sweeping customer credits was a problem. I'm glad to say that we have fixed that. That policy already has been addressed within the new solar pair-up that has already been approved by council, so that, so that is fixed. We also need to get better at doing third-party financing to create the tools that will enable people to do solar on the roofs. And in both Districts Four and Nine, a particularly important thing is community solar, to allow renters to participate in our solar programs, since so many of the residents in both of these districts do, within multifamily settings, are currently unable to participate in the solar program.
Using solar energy in their residence is a great opportunity for us to expand the availability of solar, whether it is in multifamily situations like apartment buildings, or like myself, I live in a townhome community where we're in row houses. That would be another great opportunity to have the more community solar use, so that you don't have the issue of one person being able to afford it. The community itself is able to take on that expense. And I think that a lot of the programs that are out there with the third-party financing, with the leasing of the equipment, these are the things that we need to be doing, and increasing the availability of solar to all of our residents. Commercial as well, I think that that's another opportunity as a business owner. I will tell you that a utility bill is a real cost center for most small businesses, so an opportunity to have cleaner energy that could potentially be cheaper, or even in the same price range as a traditional energy would be a great benefit.
Good afternoon. My name's Luke Aaron. I'm sorry I'm late, but I had other, I'd be at the Austin Energy State Department at five, maybe it's a little ago. My position is on solar energy for homes and businesses. If you're in the right direction, go for it. I'm all for solar energy, as long as it's not dictated that you have to do it. But if you can do it, go for it. If District Four, 70%, 76%, thank you, 76% of the residents of District Four are renters, and I would say most of the people who own the houses will not do it, but if we can put up an incentive program to encourage it, I'm all for it.
You know, I really like the distributed solar model, which is putting it on businesses and homes. And the benefit of that is you have less loss of power from resistance as you're sending the energy back. So it is a hugely beneficial model for the city. It saves us money to do it that way. Instead of having a solar farm that's, you know, 50 miles outside of Austin, having distributed solar is a, is a great idea. Some policy changes that would, I'd support going for it. I like that the council's looking at the credits that are being removed. I have a dear friend who has solar panels on her home, and she's complained about this many times. I think the ambient financing is a great opportunity. From a more strategic standpoint, we need to look, these devices have a lifetime of 15 to 20 years. And so we need to have a strategic kind of recovery plan in the next 15 to 20 years. How are we going to deal with this? Because we're going to have a lot come up at about that timeframe. So I just would like to have some information, the council direct staff, to go look at what's a contingency, contingency plan going forward strategically. Thanks.
I support use, customer use of solar energy at homes and businesses, especially new development, if you're going to incorporate it. I don't like dictating things either. Perhaps some way to incentivize the homeowners, make it more attractive to them. I have a friend who just moved into a new home, has a solar array. Every time I talk to him, first thing out of his mouth is the latest about how much he saved. And so I think that alone, testimonials, if nothing else, might help drive it. But we need to find a way to do it on multifamily homes as well. I know that that's a, I boss, and it's up to the property owner, but there's got to be some way to make it happen, even if you're starting a new development. Same thing with the businesses. We have a new elementary school that just started in late August, the Heimlich-Broiler Elementary School in District Four. It has a solar array on the roof, and then even incorporated an educational component for the students while they're using it to help the district money, or save the taxpayer.
I'd support to use solar panels, whether it be residential or commercial. I'd balance the work to use solar panels, whether it be residential or commercial. I think that one of the things that I would focus on is education, at least in District Four. I don't even think we have recycling down at District Four. And if you go around to a lot of the apartment complexes, you have the recycle bins full of trash, that's not recyclable. So I think a major push would be educating individuals who live in multi, multi-homes or apartment complexes on what is the benefit of participating in programs such as these. The other thing we need to look at is just, you know, what, what is the return on investment? And that's kind of one of the things that we need to look at as far as the percentage of renters that we have in District Four versus the homeowners. So it comes back to education, educating the consumer on making wise choices and how that has benefited not only for the rates, but in the long term as far as the planet that we live on.
So I'm very supportive also of customer use of solar. As some folks have mentioned, there are differences in District Nine and District Four between the levels of homeowners or renters, low-income folks versus middle-income folks. And something that I've been pushing is for our next council to be thinking of equity metrics when we are telling, directing city staff towards their goals. So in transportation, for example, we oftentimes are looking at vehicle miles traveled or levels of service, but we should be looking at accessibility to transportation across incomes, race, geography, and the same, we should be setting similar goals when we're talking about distributed solar or community solar, to make sure that whether folks are owners or renters, whether they're high-income or low-income, that their, their programming is equitable. And I think setting those sorts of goals at our utility will, or will push our staff to work on on build financing, third-party financing, community solar more quickly because they will, our city will have a directed understanding of what we're really going for.
With the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, I permit these fracking operations. And City of Austin doesn't really have to worry about it, but we have, we have fracking operations going all over the state. It is making our state, the fracking is making our state viable. That's why we have so many people moving here. So when it comes to our energy production effect by the resources, one of the things that we're going to see with fracking is the price of natural gas is going down. So the gas that you have at your house, the gas that we would have at the Fayette Power Plant is going to be cheaper for us in the long run because we are producing so little more natural gas. And to be honest with you, the fracking is causing the state of the United States to produce more gas than we don't have to be energy-upended anymore.
Yeah, so natural gas is the absolute cheapest source of energy that we have, period. And again, I'm going to sound like a broken record on this, it is, it is a very environmentally responsible thing to get us away from such resources, but we have to do it from a financial standpoint and make sure that we are not, again, cratering the utility bills of District One, Two, Three, and Four. And there are ways to do this. You go back to Austin Energy and you say, we want a strategy and a plan of how you're going to cut this, cut this, cut this, and come back with that. And we're going to monitor you, your performance on that either monthly or quarterly so that we don't get to the end of the budget cycle and we're, you know, we're going to be troubled. So that is the responsible thing to do. We want green energy, we want to reduce the environmental impact, but financially, we have to have the will to tell Austin Energy we need to cut some costs, and there are ways to do it. Again, lean business practices is what every corporation in this town uses to cut their expenses, 5% to 10% year-on-year. They do it with their hands tied behind their back, and there are ways to do this. We just have to expect it and set policy to do it.
Basically, unfortunately, my, my knowledge at this level is, is very limited, but what I can say is this is whatever resources are chosen, we need to make sure they are cost-effective. It does not create a cost burden on the taxpayers, especially the vulnerable population. We also need to make sure that it is not being, create any more harm to the environment.
So after, after I received all the information from, you know, from the diverse groups on, on energy, I decided that my next PhD, PhD was going to be in energy, since I am here in Austin. So at this point, I really don't have an opinion on that. But what I will say is that we do need a sustainable solution. We can't continue in our old ways. We do need to develop a sustainable solution. We need, need to always keep in mind not to kind of take it out on District Four, because that's kind of what's been happening in Austin. You know, we marginalize the individuals that are the working class, and that's kind of what we've been doing, and, and hopefully with this new 10-1, we are able to change that. And that's kind of what I've been working on for the last five years. So cutting costs and also kind of keeping in mind the price of electricity or the price of energy is a big factor, and that's kind of one of the unfortunate things, but we do need to develop sustainable solutions.
So I, like the others I've spoken so far, am very concerned with making sure energy rates are fair, but that, that all of the costs of the city, of our city utilities are fair, and that we need to be financially responsible, but to make financially responsible decisions, we need to take into account the full cost of our energy generation, and the cost of water is something that everyone is concerned with here in Austin. And so if we aren't taking into account the externalities of our energy generation, that is, the large amount of water that's used for fracking, then we aren't really calculating the cost. Right now, there are many folks that are talking about it being inevitable that we have to go search for new sources of water, or inevitable that other communities in Texas are going to run out of water, and it certainly is not inevitable. If we use sufficient conservation measures, Austin has been proven, to be able to step up and sustainably keep water use constant despite our population growth. And we should not be forcing other communities to have to invest in additional infrastructure ourselves, to have to invest in additional infrastructure to bring water here, which will end up costing us even more. So it'd be a great financial, as well as environmental consequences if we keep this up.
I definitely think that we need to, as Greg said, take a complete 360 view of the actual cost associated with energy creation. Austin Energy is one of the largest users of water in this area. So as we talk about going to green and sustainable energy sources, on the one hand, you say, yes, these are more expensive than natural gas or more expensive than coal, but water is a resource that we are running out of. The cost of water is also going up, and water is essential for life. I think that when we are talking about how and where we get energy from, the cost and amount of water used in creation needs to be in the top priority of deciding factors on what energy source we use, because if and when we do run out of water in this community, do we want to look back and say, well, there was a time when we could have made another decision, but it was cheaper to use this brand energy? I think we need to look long-term, look big picture, and really understand the cost of water.
Well, Austin, as you know, is in the midst of one of the worst droughts on record, so water use certainly needs to run through every decision we make as a city, from planning choices to the selection of energy resources. And I would say, I'm not sure if we're going to have a question about this later in the discussion, but that's one of the reasons why I've been really focused on energy efficiency and a big supporter of energy efficiency. It is both our cheapest method of, of energy because we, we reduce the cost of investing in new agreements to purchase or to build power plants, and it also certainly doesn't, you know, has a, has a lower impact, and it also improves affordability. So absolutely, I believe that water use should be in consideration as we make decisions about energy resources.
Well, I certainly agree that we need to think about all of our resources as we look ahead towards the, towards the future of Austin Energy. Glad that the, the Generation Planning Task Force did, did take all of our resources into account in making the recommendations and calling for a, a carbon-free future for, for the utility. The burning cost of fuels does require a very significant amount of water, that's the use of renewable energy. And so I think that focusing on, on renewables for the future of our utility is, is a sound idea partly because of the, the potential water savings that will entail, if we can see by, by printing up the use of the water that is currently needed at Decker, at, at Fayette, and even the South Texas project, we could ensure healthy flows into the Gulf and, and benefit our environment here on this side as well. We would also see some additional benefits brought at Decker by retiring the plant. We'll be able to use the Decker leg as a reservoir that would serve the, the city in general. So I think there's a lot of good reasons to think carefully about water as we charge, of course, for the, for our resources for the utility.
We need to be looking at water globally with everything that we do. Austin's new motto in a dozen years might be, welcome to Austin, bring your own water if we don't. We have to consider, as, as each of us in the districts, as district representatives will consider how, what we vote for will affect the rest of Austin, as the city of Austin, we have to consider how things affect the rest of Texas as well. Our rates have gone up recently primarily because of the, the business structure of the utilities are based on how much you use, instead of following what the city's goals of conservation are. So we need to revise the business structure of the utilities in order for the rates to come down, and then we can also have, we'll have the same goals, you know, of conservation. But we need to absolutely be looking at how water is being used in anything that we're doing. Making their homes more energy efficient. But we have a problem with folks who aren't able to pay their utility bills on a regular basis. I've seen utility bills upwards of $9,000, and, and these folks come in saying, well, obviously, I'm never going to be able to pay this. This is the minimum amount I need to pay in order to keep my utilities going. And they'll go around to different social service agencies to collect the minimum amount of money they can, they need, $200 here, $50 there. With the increase in rates this year, the social service agencies almost had a heart attack because now that's a reduced number of people that they can actually help. So we need to make sure that we are changing the business practices of the utilities to be in line with the practices, the conservation practices of the council and the city of Austin. And once we get those things aligned, our, our low-income people in Austin are going to be able to afford their utility bills more.
We talk a lot about affordability in Austin, and it's been a key focus. It was a key focus of mine when I ran in 2011 and continues to be. Very often, we talk about it in terms of housing costs and rents, but it is critical that we consider how utility costs play into that. During the rate case, I was a strong advocate for expanding our customer assistance program, making sure that we captured more people within it and raised the benefits that were available. When we were hearing from lots of folks out in the community who were having, really struggling to pay their bills for a variety of factors, including the rate increase, including the fact that they hadn't been collecting for a long time, including the fact that we had billing system errors, I worked with community members, some of them in the room, voting Carol, to have an ordinance change that made it possible for people to begin to pay back some of those high bills, whereas before it was really impossible. They had to pay the entire bill in a month. We also started a committee to look at the rearage management plans that were being ongoing, ongoing. And then lastly, as I mentioned, I'm very keen on energy efficiency, and just ran out of time, so I'll tell you more about that in another question.
With regard to conservation programs, the return on investment for us as taxpayers is absolutely huge. You could say we can kill three birds with one stone. You improve energy efficiency, you reduce peak demand, and you've improved affordability, which, you know, District Four, we love that. Now, there are some things about the conservation program that Austin Energy has implemented that they've learned some lessons on, and there was the appliance replacement program, which did not really serve a lot of people well. It was expensive, and, you know, they got a huge, large air conditioner when a window unit would have been just fine. So there's some efficiency things we've learned from those programs and some things we could do better. I think one of the things we could do better is weatherization is absolutely key, and we could set minimum standards and incentive programs for increased insulation, ceiling insulation, and ducts and all of that. And again, that's killing three birds with one stone. Huge improvement, return on investment for us as a city.
There are multiple changes that could be done or chosen from. We, I think one of the best ways to do it is execute the equity recommendations in the Austin Energy Generation Resource Planning Task Force report. It, it provides jobs, it decreases energy costs for the customers. Also, it delivers social justice, economic justice of the law for the new. They need to stand their ground on that resolution just recently planned because businesses and corporations are going to be pushing, trying to get what they want. They need to stop getting those subsidies. They need to stop getting special deals, paying less than the rest of us. I'm considered a power saver by Austin Energy, yet through the allocation of billing, especially with water, I'm paying for somebody else's water. Now, I've been able to manage that, but not everybody can, especially in District Four. We need to make sure it all comes down to customer service for the consumers. They need to give everybody what's equitable.
So given my, my 40 years or more of workforce development, I would focus on developing the skills of the individuals that live in District Four so they can afford to pay their bills. If they have better skills, they are able to get better jobs, therefore, they're able to pay their bills. So that's one of the things that I would focus on, workforce development, to continue that workforce development. The other two, the other point is weatherization program, making sure that if they're living in a house or an apartment, that it's properly weatherized, that, you know, the energy not seeping out through the windows or through the roof or through the ceiling. Education, I've sat down with, I, I lost track of how many individuals that they, upon leaving their house, will turn off their AC because they don't want to be wasting energy. And then they come home and they crank up the AC, and then they can never get it to the ideal temperature because, you know, and that AC is just running constantly. And finally, the last point is get a strong rental registration program. That will help individuals who are living in rental properties to make sure that their properties are being kept up.
This question asks which changes, we've only got one minute, so I'll talk briefly about bringing about a more expanded, community-based weatherization program. By increasing weatherization and moving more of our energy efficiency resources in Austin Energy's budget to a weatherization program, we can actually go door-to-door and not ask our residents to contact Austin Energy and cut the red, through red tape, or then to be able to participate in the weatherization program. But instead, City Hall and Austin Energy should go to communities in District Four and other working-class communities that have older homes. We should make sure that that program is also creating local jobs by pairing local nonprofits and workforce development programs with the contractors that we use. We can be training the next generation of inspectors and technicians directly out of our communities to be knocking on doors and participating in weatherization. We should, I would make changes so that we can get folks all the way up to 400% of the federal property line included within the program and figure out if we have to do on build financing or some sort of sliding scale to afford it.
When we talk about changes that we should be making, I would say that a lot of these programs, weatherization, upgrading appliances, we need to be targeting the property owners because quite frankly, a tenant cannot make a change like that on a house that he or she does not own. And I think that's kind of the missing link with a lot of these programs, is we need to be reaching out to the property owners. A lot of these property owners don't live in Austin, they bought the house, put in a for rent sign, and they just collect their check. Whether or not their tenants have the ability to afford their utility bill is of zero concern to them. So we need to get in contact with the property owners and incentivize them to upgrade their appliances and weatherize the homes because the tenants cannot make that decision. I think we also need to look at the fees. In my last month's utility bill, I paid $20 in water and $40 in fees. Whether or not I have the ability to pay that is not the issue. Why am I paying $40 in fees? That's what I would change. That's what I would change.
I didn't steal it from you. No, like I said, in District 4, it's 70% renters, 76% renters. We're not going to make a dent for the low-income because they're renting right now if we don't get set up an incentive program for the landowners. We need to set up a program in which the landowners are eligible to do it and encourage them to do it. If we don't do it, there is no way to do it. On the rates, what I'm looking at is if possible, is to extend the tier structure to make it where the people are due use of lower energy, to keep a lower rate until it kicks up to the next year. The other things that they need to look at is the weatherization of the home. One of the biggest differences that I found in my house is when I went and put grid vents on top of them. I would say it will save, my added temperature dropped by over 20 degrees just by putting grid vents in, and I'm out of time.
All right. Thank you, candidates. And I have to say, you all stole my next question from me. And this will be our first 30-second question. 55% of Austinites are renters. What is your position on requiring owners of apartments and other rental properties to meet minimum energy efficiency standards?
I totally support it. It needs to be done. I know that the apartments are supposed to have notification in the office for tenants to see, and they don't know about that. Tenants need to be made aware that they can request an energy audit done on the property to make sure the property comes up to speed where it needs to be, to make it better for the property owner, better for the tenants.
As I said in my earlier statement, I think we need a very strong rental registration program. We currently have one, but we need to make sure that we give it one team to make sure that the properties are being kept up. 55% of the individuals who are renters sometimes don't have access, as the chairman said, you know, the property owners don't live, and the majority of the property owners in District 4 don't live in District 4, they live somewhere else. So they really don't care. So that's kind of why in District 4, we need a really strong rental program, rental registration program, so we can take care of the positions and help these individuals have sufficient expenses.
I support requiring owners of rental properties to meet basic energy efficiency standards. I would support also this regularly being inspected and checked at point of sale and on major commercial properties that are turned over as often for us to set up a regular inspection process to make sure folks are up to building codes as well as minimum efficiency standards that would be set by council.
I think that, excuse me, having a minimum energy efficiency standard is definitely something that we need to have. I think that when we talk about how we incentivize or promote that program, we need to take into consideration that we don't create a program that has a lot of cost attached to it that will just be trickled down to the renters. Because such a large population of our citizens are renters, we need to be making sure that we're walking the fine line between energy efficiency and affordability and not creating situations in which renters are going to be priced out of their homes.
I'm kind of mixed on this question. What is your position on requiring homeowners, I mean, owners of apartments and other rental properties to meet a minimum energy efficiency standard? The city of Austin right now has too many regulations. If we keep attacking with all these people, the renting's going up. I do believe that we need to set a standard, that we need to set, you know, some type of efficiency standard, but the libertarian side of me says we need to stop getting to be a nanny state, and I'm out of time.
This is a great question, you know, incentives versus a mandate. And I think, you know, I'm a small business owner, and, you know, you had me at hello and you helped me with my return on investment, or you gave me an incentive. So I think that is a better way to go. You can catch more bees with honey. And if owners know that there are incentive programs for these things, you will get more compliance, more so than a mandate. Our code compliance department is already over-swamped right now. We can't even get in the Runberg area code to come out and look at apartments that have, you know, air conditioning problems, people are have health issues. So I say, I think incentives are a much better way to go.
So my immediate reaction is, yes, I think this is a fantastic idea, but I am concerned about what this would do ultimately to rental rates, which is a big problem all across the city. Incentivizing might be the way to go. There could be a program through Austin Energy that helps the owners make their houses more efficient. It's something that I would have to look at much, much more in depth to see what the sort of fallout would be for requiring anything like this.
At our last council meeting, I sponsored the creation of the Low Income Consumer Advisory Task Force to look at really increasing our energy efficiency programs and also looking at innovative ideas, and I think this should be among, among one of the ideas they look at. It did get some discussion at the Generation Type Task Force, and I think it's definitely worth considering, and I'm supportive in concept of it. One of the other issues that I am interested in, concerned about with regard to our energy efficiency program is making sure that it doesn't, in the end, drive up our rental costs. So I am fully supportive of our energy efficiency programs. We need to be sure that when there's cost participation among the development community, that they don't pass those along to renters.
Certainly support minimum energy efficiency standards on new construction of apartment buildings and commercial buildings, and we are headed towards that with expectations that all new construction being zero energy capable. With respect to existing buildings, it is more complicated because of the affordability concerns. We've talked about this a lot in the past and by way of discussion of our Energy Conservation and Disposal Ordinance, or ECA, we've been making progress on that and bringing more and more buildings into the fold. This year, some smaller buildings were brought in. We need to keep making use of that data and working collaboratively with the owners of the large properties to identify opportunities for efficiency savings, efficiency progress that that won't impact the program.
Ooh, they're fast. This is going to be another 30-second question. What is your position on the continued use of utility subsidies to industrial and large commercial customers?
I don't support it. I was fully in support of closing the tariff that allowed a really significant subsidy to our largest utility users. In fact, I was looking through my files in preparation for coming here tonight and had actually dropped the resolution about it, and then our Austin Energy staff came forward with an ordinance change that closed that tariff that was giving very significant subsidies that will now end next spring.
Yeah, I don't support the large subsidies either. Do you expect those, the large contracts to expire? And I expect those to go on regular rates, and I support that.
Subsidies just create an uneven playing field, and it is not the job of government to create an uneven playing field. We want to make sure that everybody's got the same cards to play, and we want to make sure that things are fair, and subsidies just create an uneven playing field, make it unfair.
I do not support the use of subsidies. I think that regardless of what business it is, I think it's kind of corporate value, and that's kind of what we've been doing at City Hall, and I think it's to stop, we need to run City Hall as a business and cut all of those subsidies.
Considering our rapid economic expansion and the attractiveness to invest here in Austin, I, like probably all of my colleagues here, am against subsidizing major commercial users for their energy bills. I think that most candidates will say that, but the fact of the matter is, we do need political backup once we're elected. We need to be honest with ourselves that these are large special interests that will be pushing for contracts that are favorable to their business. That's what their job is as a business, and so we need to elect folks that have a proven track record of standing up to large interests and winning at City Hall.
When we have issues around affordability like we do in Austin, I think that it's completely irresponsible to consider these tax subsidies to corporations anymore. Giving that kind of help is something that a government would do to help either bolster the economy or help a business that is unable to, but would be a benefit to the community. It's not part watch to just be given out to every business because that's how we do things in Austin. It needs to stop. We need to be investing in our own community and the residents, and how can we support them and their ability to pay?
This is not an easy question to answer in 30 seconds. One thing you have to be aware of, these large companies, if you put them on the full tax rate, they will go off the grid and set up their own system. So if you're looking at green energy, these guys set up their own coal-fired plant. So you have to kind of balance that, because if we lose the money coming into the system, we're going to make up the revenue. So you have to kind of balance back and forth. But the answer is, no, I don't really support giving them subsidies, but we have to look at the rate structure for them.
So back in March of this year, this council approved $6 million in subsidies to the teaching hospital and the medical school. And so I spoke about this in June, they were going to do another $2.5 million fee waiver, and when I spoke about it, had several other people, Laura Houston and Paul Robbins speak, and we saved $1.5 million that this council was going to just pencil whip through. And later, $2.5 more million was reduced based on, because those fees were going to have to be borne by us, our rate. Our rates were going to have to go up because of that. So I have absolutely reduced those subsidies, and I do not support them.
I definitely do not support the continued use of utility subsidies to commercial customers. I've said that before. It's a disservice to the residents, whether you're in a home or an apartment. It's time that they share this economic injustice against the consumers is overdue. They never should have been given those subsidies.
All right. This is the very last question, and it too is a 30-second question. Austin Energy owns a 16% share of the two South Texas nuclear reactors, which are set to retire in 2027 and 2028, but may be relicensed. Do you favor keeping, adding to, or phasing out nuclear power as an energy source for Austin Energy?
I strongly support our leadership on clean energy issues, and nuclear energy is not clean energy, and so I fully support phasing out and retiring our nuclear reactors as soon as possible.
Nuclear power is not only not green, it's not safe. You know, a couple of years ago, there was the plant in Japan that had their meltdown. They're still leaking nuclear, nuclear energy into the Pacific Ocean. It's not safe to our community to have this source of energy at all. We need to very quickly and very determinately start phasing that out. There are other ways for us to produce energy, and we do have a responsibility to the Austin and surrounding communities to find safe and reliable forms of energy.
I guess I want to be on the other side. Nuclear energy is safe. If you think it's not, then you're, it is. The biggest problem with nuclear energy is getting rid of the waste, and there are some stuff going on right now in which it's going to be a lot easier to dispose of because they're looking at breaking down the nuclear waste. So I figured within the next 20 to 50 years, it'll be a viable source.
I love this question. I'm going to challenge my engineering friend down here.
Oh, you can, I'll be glad.
I have a degree in chemistry and physics, and nuclear energy is incredibly dangerous. It's more dangerous than fossil fuel energy, and I would, and the reason I say that is because you have a way to geder the CO2 with trees. In nuclear disasters, there's no way to geder it. Fukushima was real. The design of the South Texas plant is exactly the same as the Fukushima plant. We have weaknesses there. I would, I am going to be a huge leader and advocate for getting off of nuclear energy. Thank you.
I'd say it needs to be phased out, shut down, figure out how to decommission it. It has a history of leaks. And I remember reading earlier, it was a fire reactor, two, one or two years ago. It is removed out of use since then. It's just a piece of equipment, or, and I simplify that obviously, but it needs to be shut down.
Like I said earlier, we need to find sustainable solutions, and I think we're at the point with technology that we could start looking at different uses of energy. So I would be in favor of phasing out the nuclear power as a source of energy.
I favor phasing out nuclear power as an energy source for Austin Energy. There are real questions about the safety and viability of extending the life of the plants and about the disposal of waste from the plant. And in light of the continued decline of the cost of renewable energy, it's hard to picture a persuasive case for additional investment in the South Texas project at the time that the plants are up for expiration. Of course, we'll have to have a full-blown conversation with full length of all the costs and benefits, but I can't picture a persuasive case for renewing our committed to those plants.
Fun fact about me, I grew up in New England, right near a nuclear plant, and it was built sort of out of the water, and all of the fishermen would get the scallops from the outflow valves at the nuclear plant because they grew bigger and the water was warm coming out of there. Consider that the next time you eat a scallop. Having said that, I also told you guys that I encircled Rocky Plant Flats, and that was not to cheer them on. I would like to see us go ahead and phase it out.
I also support phasing it out. It's a dangerous source of power. It uses tremendous amounts of water, as was discussed earlier, and every time, we do need to make repairs down there, it's costly for ratepayers.
Well, wow, you guys are great. Thank you so much. That's all the questions. Now, candidates will have one minute each for a closing statement.
Well, thank you all very much for coming this evening. I really appreciate it. This has been a really interesting event for me. Austin Energy is not my strong suit, but I certainly have learned a lot about it while I've been campaigning and am a little bit horrified by the way that it's run, but I would like to see some changes there. Again, I am the only non-incumbent running in District 9, and I do plan to reorganize Austin Energy, audit their budget, review what they're doing, same with the water utility, so that we can make sure that we are getting the best, most effective work from the utilities that we can get. Thank you again for coming this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. In the three years, three and a half years I've been on council, I've been a strong environmental leader. I've focused on issues of affordability, and, you know, there are many differences really among the candidates who are up here in terms of our commitment for clean energy, our commitment to really doing everything we can as a city to ensure that we're taking actions in a time of real climate change. I would, though, mention that there are some areas where I believe I've really distinguished myself as a leader, particularly in this area. The first is to make sure, I sponsored the resolution to make sure that developers are paying their full cost for line extensions to Austin Energy. It will save millions of dollars. I've been a strong consumer advocate, from sponsoring the ordinance change I mentioned for, to create a re-urge management plan committee that will come up with better protections for consumers, to working on the customer assistance program and really making sure that we're looking out for the interest of all of our ratepayers, to making sure that our energy efficiency programs are reaching out across the economic spectrum. So thanks for your consideration.
I've probably played a leadership role on the environmental issues during the course of my five, somewhat over five years of experience on the Austin State Council. And I've done that in terms of working
And I've done that in terms of working on policy and in my own life. I've been strongly committed to environmental goals. My own house, I fixed my own house with the first four-star residential remodel in history, I think, Green Building Program, Austin Energy's Green Building Program. I've been car free since 2008. That's my bike out front that I brought here on the bus. And I've found that taking great satisfaction in working with environmental leaders, like some of whom are in this room tonight, and making sure that Austin retains its leadership role on all those issues. I'm so proud of what we've been able to achieve, in the climate protection resolution that I sponsored in April of this year, as well as the affordability, affordable energy resolution that we passed more recently. It's through collaborative efforts with leaders like those in this room that we're going to be able to retain that leadership role and ask for your support to help me continue that. Thanks.
At the beginning of the campaign, I went to an energy briefing put on by a lot of the groups that are in this room today, and I was very surprised and shocked by the information that I learned that night. And after that meeting, I went to about 10 Austin Water Utility Commission meetings. And one of the reasons why is that when we talk about this new leadership that we're going to be electing and that City Council sits on the board of Austin Energy and of these utilities, for me, I think it's very important to understand how this business runs because it affects all of our daily lives. I think with the new council, we have an opportunity to elect leadership that has strong business experience to be able to truly lead and guide our utilities. We need to really be concerned about how we are creating energy, how we are servicing our customers, how we are continuing to make energy affordable and available to the Austin residents. And that is something that I feel very secure to be able to do. Thank you.
One of the things that we have to be aware of, the City Council's got to be aware of, we can't get on the bandwagon that says we're doing global warming, we're doing this. You need to look at the whole picture. And I know this is not a crowd to talk to, but I am not on the climate change bandwagon. One of the things that I do, I look at a lot of the research, like a report that came out, you'll see where it says 97% of the scientists believe in global warming. But if you want to read the report more, it only said 37% of people did peer review. So we're jumping on a lot of things that we may not need to do, we need to look at to the future.
Austin Energy has two main components. There's a business component, and there's an engineering technical component. What we need is a council member that has both. I run a small business. I've been a leadership manager in a billion-dollar networking business in the engineering company Freescale Semiconductor. And the hard business and technical questions need to be asked. You know, we do want environmental protections, but we have to pay for it. And so we have to cut costs. That's the piece I can bring to the table. That's the piece that Austin Energy needs to focus on that hasn't happened yet. And I've talked to Larry Weeks. He is very interested in implementing lean business practices in Austin Energy. And I've asked him, why haven't you done it, Larry? He said, because the council has not set it as policy. He goes, Larry, we need to do it. And I said, well, I can be the one to do that. There's plenty of people up here in District Four that would be a good vote on the council, but we need a leader to ask the hard questions, and I can be that person. And I ask for your vote for District Four. Thank you.
For me, it's all about the social justice that the consumers need. Austin Energy needs to send a representative out into the community. Communities that are left out of the conversation, they focus on the big guns, corporations, give special deals. Send somebody out to the community school alliance meetings, community meetings, or it's the neighborhood association, or Restore Runberg, which is very important for the northern part of District Four. I am the place by education designated me, it's a recent appointment of me, but I've been involved in that for just over a year. All my focus is healthcare, excuse me, energy consumption affects healthcare, a lot of things affect health in general. So I believe that the key besides taking care of cutting the subsidies out, finding the best deals to get clean energy at hopefully not a high cost, equitable cost for consumers, there needs to be better engagement with the community.
So I'll turn to another minute. I think my notes are equal to like five minutes. One of the things we do need is we need sustainable solutions for our energy needs moving forward. We know we are already growing the city. We need to collaborate with the neighbors, our neighbors and our businesses to maintain affordable energy rates here in Austin for everybody. I believe that my experience both in business and workforce development and my educational choices actually make me a leader to pick the important votes that we needed to ask, the important questions that we need to ask. And really quick, without like 30 seconds, I will share a story. I went on block walking, I run into one of the neighbors, and they tell me, you know, we need somebody in City Council that is honest. We need a, and it was a, it kind of stopped me because she said, we need an honest politician. So that kind of threw me off. And I can, you know, the fundamental premise of 10-1 is putting the neighbors first, if that's what I'm running on, is putting neighbors first. And I can honestly say that I don't represent any special interest. I can honestly say that. And I kind of challenge all of my colleagues up here to honestly say that they don't represent special interests, and I'm pretty sure a lot of them won't be able to say that. And my record speaks for it. Having worked with my neighbors for the last five years, I can honestly say that. So I ask for your support.
So too often in the choices that we're making at Austin Energy and on the City Council in general, we're being presented with options like, well, you can have clean water, or you can have housing for everyone, but you can't have both. You can have energy efficiency, or you can have affordable rents, but you can't have both. You even heard these things lay out here on this panel today. You can have Keystone, or you can be unemployed. Which one do you choose? And these are all false choices that we're constantly presented with, pitting the needs of affordability and working class folks like the folks in District Four against our environmental needs. And what we need to do is not just have a solid vote on the council, but also folks on the council who will bring together the communities in District Four and working class communities all across our city, together with environmentalists and those concerned with climate change and creating a cleaner environment. Because at the heart of it, what's better for all of our communities, for us to all be more prosperous and healthy, is for us to fight against climate change, for us to create green jobs, and for us to be really serious about reducing our carbon emissions, which will ultimately only hurt us if we don't take those steps.
Well, whoo, that was it. Thank you very much. And thank you all for coming out tonight. Please feel free to stay and mingle with the candidates and ask them any questions that you have that we didn't ask. And thanks again, candidates. It was all great.